I'd like to call the regularly scheduled Board of Selectment meeting for Monday, August 16, 2021, but let me edit that. Our regularly scheduled time is 8:30 in the morning. Today it is 2:30 and it is being conducted in a hybrid fashion as allowed by Governor's Order and Legislative Action. First order of business is pledge allegiance. Charlie, would you, traditions, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic which is in its foundation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, Charles. Public forum. Anyone wishing to address the board in public forum? Hearing none, let's move on to item three in approved minutes, and those would be free up one, the August 2nd, 2021 regular meeting. Is there a motion?
Thank you, motion to approve the minutes.
Second, any comments, questions, suggested changes or corrections? No? Oh, another perfect recording, Christ, thank you very much. Let me try your minds. All in favor, opposed, abstained, recused, or hearing none, motion carried.
And you're going to try to confirm what Sandy remotely is?
Yes, Sandy, oh yes, Sandy?
Aye.
Thank you. Should we go back to now, just, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. All right, item four, Finance Director, Mary Jane Malvacey, in person as opposed to down in the hallway?
It's easier for me to talk to you guys in person than Sandy.
Hi, Sandy.
Aye, aye.
So what I'm presenting today is unaudited final June 30, 21 reports. Next month I will be reporting on July and August, so we caught up to date. Yes, next month. I will say that there are possibilities that these numbers will change slightly. We always have some adjustments, last minute things that come up, but it is as close as we can be as of today. So I'll start with revenues. As of last year, we did come in over budget on revenues, 364, almost $364,000, based on the information you have in front of you. And as you can see, many of our departments brought in more money than their budget. And we've been discussing this as we go along, might not be too many surprises, but if you have any questions, I'm glad we can help.
Just want to talk a little bit about revenues.
Yeah.
We are not going to need to utilize the operating transfers, is that correct?
No, absolutely not.
Okay, so what originally showed up as an operating surplus or overage, you know, 526,563 will be offset by that 250 and Board of Education adjustment, state adjustment, so 363,749 is, it's our number.
Yes.
For further discussion, Tom, you and I have already had conversations, this at the end of this year. Will we be able to do an analysis against the ARP projected 2.1% revenue target?
Certainly can, as you can see, this is only 101%, 1.2% of, so year over year, and maybe after those things I've been working on, so I haven't gotten those numbers for you yet, but, yes.
Just as a way of background for the ARC funds, they're reimbursing the possibility for loss revenue. The assumption set for revenue is growth, year-over-year growth of 4.1% revenue, right?
From 19 to 20, 20 to 21.
So there's an opportunity to apply some of those funds for that revenue, any revenue gap that exists between a 4.1% revenue growth year-over-year from 19 to 20 and then 20 to 21, which obviously goes through both of them. Or, your way to determine whether or not we can apply that to reserve account, obviously we could do that, you know, with the straight up money or do it on balance, so.
In that calculation, is there any way to take into account? I'm thinking if you go to the town clerk, that figure, you know, to me, obviously, this is probably.
Absolutely.
And that's an exception. Is there any ability to take that kind of exception into account?
No, there is not.
Because it does both the positive and the negative.
Yeah.
For instance.
We can't just say interest income is short and applied with just that line item. You have to do it, it has to be cumulative. It's very clear, it needs to be cumulative and overall plan. So we'll be including things like the parking wreck fees, parking fees, net, places that we, you know, that truly have a loss in that particular fund, so.
Do we personally have to keep those kinds of things in my budget?
This year's in the, yeah.
Okay.
We, you know, I've been doing budgets for other organizations, we're going back to 19, you know, continually looking at 19, looking at where we were the last couple of years, but 19 has become the baseline, so to speak.
And then let's also not forget that that revenue number reflects a $500,000 shortfall in finance.
Right. And we already took that into consideration in this year's budget by bringing that down because we know that that interest is going to take a while to, took a while for us to get there, it's going to take us, you know, a while to get back up.
And then on the positive side, goal forces up, $5,000, the art department is up almost is $134,000. The family service fees is over by 56,000, so there were some areas where we did quite well. All right, I'm sorry.
No, that's fair, I'm here for you guys, let me tell you a lot of this stuff.
And then just on the expenditure stuff, everybody raised.
Yes.
All right. Just wanted to note a couple of things. For the selection's line item, really, we didn't really just type the belt there, we didn't spend $16,000 for micro identity service on videotape. That's a predominant portion of that, plus dues and training and travel significantly reduced since that. Legal is one that I think we anticipated this when we made the move, sorry, kind of removed, we were moving money from the department to the other, but I think that has worked out well. Again, we are pretty close to wrapping up all the negotiations, thanks to all the work that you folks have been doing. So I think we have a little capacity left there that we're carrying forward for negotiations.
Absolutely, we carry forward money from last year's budget, which we'll be able to take up any excess as well, so.
Just to talk a little bit about Police Department, that was largely in police salaries, I think it was, so they went down, they're replacing salaries and so, significantly and was way, one was significantly over what they had allocated. And then.
I'd just like to add in that, you know, in the police, we have a lot of turnover, we had a lot of turnover, and when we budget, we budget for the highest, you know, expense that we may have, depending on what their level is, not only on salary, but even on medical. So they come in, you know, on the lower end of the salary scale and maybe with just a single, you know, we have some savings there, but we always budget on the assumption that we eat highest, so that really not comes short. So sometimes that, you know, helps us on the budgeting side.
Gotcha. Just a quick question, under parking record, senior meal subsidy, significantly over.
We did, and that's, and they're kind of back, the problem that they had was they weren't having breakfast.
Right.
And breakfast was a really big revenue generator for them, and with the lower expense, and it kind of weighed out the other areas. So really, that was a big part of it, not being able to serve breakfast.
Right, so, straight, you're straight men to the question, is that a legitimate COVID-related expense, that shortfall for the program fees for breakfast that could be accommodated with ARC funds?
Well, it'll certainly all be part of that calculation, because we're going to use the numbers that we have, yes, absolutely.
So there's a chance to offset.
Absolutely.
And then, that's a good, I have one. So capital seems to be over.
Well, what.
That looks like vehicles may be.
Right, well, what I wanted to say, when we started with expenditures, that this, we can talk about this particular piece of paper, but it's really the transfer sheet that makes a huge difference. Because if you remember, I've been talking about how we spent $210,000 on stage streets that we needed to bring in from, so there's a lot of transfers coming in from fund balance that are covering that and other things that are going out. And in the end, I'm not sure if you looked at this, but I kind of did this by hand. The after-budget adjustment one, I have showed capital with a balance of about $16,000 at the end of the year, after we discussed all of the transfers, both in and out. So I don't want to not answer your question, Lou, but I think it's probably easier to adjust as we're going through the transfers.
Got it. It's nice to see the adjusted balance on this sheet, same, adjusted balance on that sheet, 665, well, yeah, pretty close, great.
Yeah, it's a little bit, $1,300, because like I said, we have money going in and out of different pots, so. But clearly, answer any question you guys want on expenditures, but like I said, you know, as we're doing the transfers, we're going to talk about all of these overages, so. If there's anything else that dying to ask first.
All right, let's, you want to do the transfers? If no one has any other questions?
Jump to those if you want.
Well.
I just want to do some of the, finish the other reports.
Yeah, let's take a look.
Okay, so I provided for you a final June 30, medical. As you can see, we have a projected surplus of $255,000. We've come in very close to budget this year. So I just wanted to make sure we presented that. Still shy, you know, shy on the catastrophic claims for the new year, we have come down a little bit on that. But overall, overall, our budget, considering we have a, you know, $1 million budget, we've only come in $250,000. So it just goes to show that.
My, my, of course, it's three.
I don't know, at the very bottom?
255,631. Plus this three could be up here.
Oh, that's just, so, okay, so if the top is, the top is just the expenditure side, the expenditures came in under budget, 350,000, and the revenues are above.
I see, okay, thanks.
Sorry.
That's good screen.
Yeah.
So a long line, both sides of the, both sides of the budget queue pretty close to reality.
Correct, correct, yeah, absolutely. And we're always, it's always a guesstimate on the revenue side, because the other line is employee mat, employee co-pays, it might be some workers' comp that's covered, COBRA if we have something, you know, there's a lot of moving parts to that number. So, you know, we try to do the best we can 18 months before it really happens, but that's why that number always fluctuates.
Do we anticipate any true-ups on this? Is that around at the end of the year, any true-ups from that, are you?
Kind of, they were already, yes, yeah, yeah. That's why, you know, we just received, and I don't have July's yet, and the beginning of the fiscal year anthem always has a bump in the road. We haven't been charged for anything in July, so we were able to finalize June with a greater microscope than normal, because we didn't have July to work with, but we'll have it for next month.
Good. Anybody else? So later this evening, Mary Jane and I will be having a conversation with our friends in the Board of Finance. We will remind them of the surplus here and ask them once again that we're going to be officially asking them, I think it's September, we're going to ask them for allocation to be open to trust, kind of from this medical fund, from a medical fund. Are we still comfortable with a million dollar? Seems like this is sufficient money there.
I'm sure.
Okay. We'll relay that to the.
So the other items, I gave you June 30, capital reports, the town side and the board bed side, all of our bonded projects on the Fund 216, which is the Board of Ed, that you'll see the first three items are the ones we closed out this year. So starting July 1, this report will be a little shorter, because those three will come off, but they're still on as of the end of June 30. So you'll see, if you take the two reports, at the very bottom line, the school being at about 2.2 million and the town being about 800,000 plus, it's approximately $3 million, and that's the amount we went for bonding. So that $3 million will cover the numbers in these two reports as we do each year. Okay, so I'd like to start with the one that is operating budget transfers. I think it might be the second one on here. Actually, the third, the third one on there, I'd like to start with that one, because that one really addresses the overages that we were just talking about on the expense side. So if we start with the column on the right where it says Department Transfers 2, these are all the line items that are over budget that we are putting money into. So the first is the town clerk, we've discussed the town clerk, her recordings. As we just discussed, her revenue, when we have an increase in revenue recordings, we have an offsetting increase in, on the expense side. And we also had a large absentee ballot expense, we did receive some grants for that, which have been applied. Overall, the town clerk needs about $1,200 to cover their account. The next is finance. We had a crossover in employees and we had a vacation payout, so we have a vacation payout and a new employee. We have an extra expense there for the year. Plus, I budgeted the wrong amount for the audit, I'll take full responsibility for that. So bottom line, the Finance Department needs $4,300 for those two persons. Human Resources, similar thing, we had an employee leave and a change of employee, again, we had some vacation, very minor, at $500, but that accounted for that overage. Register of Voters, we've talked about numerous times already, the primary and the national election caused some huge expenses. Again, we had grants from the Secretary of State's office, they have all been applied to this line, and we still have an overage of $6,600. The next is natural resources, tree maintenance, we've done a significant dent into all of the trees that we need taken care of, and on top of that, trees due to the storms that we had. So natural resources is coming in, needing $14,000 to cover that expense.
Yeah, just, we may need to be more honest with ourselves in terms of what we budget for the tree maintenance. We always, we always whack government's budget, but, I mean, we have to take a look at the trend line.
With the storms, we have some choice, you know, to get out there, to run everywhere.
Yeah, we've been trying to get between dead trees, yeah. Then important line item.
It's remarkable, this time of year, you can really tell there are a lot of dead trees. Last, that's a, boy, 146 and 377, it's a perfect line.
I'm sorry, Sandy, I'm ignoring you on your side. Can you hear me?
It's a little hard to hear you, and I can't see you, I can't see you either, so it makes it even worse.
I'll get her, hold on.
Oh, yeah, no, keep it, I like it, I'm off screen, oh, there.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Sorry about that.
It's all right.
All right, so we're all set on natural resources?
I'm going to be a little bit of a pain here.
Okay.
I hear you, yeah, I'm just going to grab, because this will be a good test. Where are you? Grab this. Two things.
No, I want to see if it works. It helps for sound. Andy, Sandy, Sandy?
Yeah, I hope.
Can you hear me better?
The camera, the camera's better, and I can hear you better. I was having difficulty hearing as well, so I called Karen, who's got Tony involved, so thank you very much.
Oh, great.
You sound better?
I sound the same. All right, thanks.
There was, there was a lot of interference, it's much better, thank you.
Oh, you should have said something, I apologize.
That might have been.
No, it wasn't you. Yeah, anyway.
Apparently there was a gadget behind the screen that was able to come out here.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you have any, if you have any questions afterwards, you know, you can call me.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so the next, we'll move on to the Building Department. We approved additional help in the Building Department, starting this year, and budgeted for it, and I should say, starting last year, budgeting for it in the current year. The Delta, her budget is $13,500 for that. She, again, has revenue to offset, more than offset that expense.
$91,000 over.
Right, right. We just talked about Guilford Lakes Golf Course, again, same thing, they have that additional revenue with all of the people coming to the golf course and, you know, how much work was going on there. Obviously, it carries over to additional maintenance and items such as that on the golf course, so we have $21,000 there. Fire Department has an overage of $202,000 in salaries, operating supplies, and vehicle maintenance. I do actually have the chief scheduled to attend the Board of Finance meeting tonight to add, you know, to talk even more specific, I don't think he's on here now, about the overage. We had some extreme vehicle maintenance items this year, operating supplies due to all of the, you know, we have the revenue on the ambulance side, and that's great, but, you know, each time we go out for a ride for a code, that's a $1,000 in supplies we have to put back on the, on the ambulance. So that's what operating supplies are over, and that's because of the runs and the overage in revenue. Again, most of these tie in with a revenue link and they correlate, and then there's their salaries. On the communication side, Charlie and I have really been looking at this budget. Immense increase in telephone line, he's got a lot more people with phones and some issues in there, so we're really going to be looking at that, that budget for next year. We either, we either did something really wrong, you know, in the budgeting, or things have really changed, or a combination of both. But that's over $16,900. In the Health Department, you would expect this one to possibly be over during, during the times we're in. But again, you know, when we have a department head retire, the town of Guilford has historically held off and, you know, hired the replacement after the vacation, you know, like Sheila retired in July, came on in October, you know, we kind of shift that so that we can lessen the burden to the budget. But when the Health Department, we could not do that. Not only did we need to hire a Health Director right away, we had two of them here at one time, because it was just that important, plus the vacation payout for that department head. So we have that. In addition, again, extra help that they have required during the epidemic. So you'll see that she needed about $30,000 in her budget. So all of those total $310,400. And if, any questions before I just keep babbling on?
Very, very helpful.
All right.
Just to go back to the COVID ARC funds, the additional costs associated with the elections expenses, I think is a justifiable COVID reimbursement, and then the same thing for the extra help during the epidemic, which we do after the fact.
Yep.
Which just means it will fund the fund, it will fall to fund balance.
Right.
Right?
Correct, correct.
So assuming that we don't go back into pandemic mode, there's nothing in the overages that makes us think that maybe we didn't budget sufficiently for the current year. I mean, the tree's obviously unrelated to COVID, but I think that we did.
Yeah, the only one where we had some concern was the communication budget. That's the only one out of these that we have a bit of concern, we're going to be, we're looking into that a little closer to see. The chief thought that maybe some of the items put to that line could have been COVID-related, where, you know, additional services that he needed, so we are looking into that. I can't say that that's what it is, but it's the one line item here that we are questioning for the upcoming year.
All right.
Does that, that answer the question?
Yes.
And I had a question, you said you, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but you under budgeted for the audit?
Yes.
So how much was it under budget about?
$950.
Okay, so like, a thousand dollars?
Correct, a thousand of the 43.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? So, so then if you look to the left-hand side, the columns, those are departments that currently have money, extra surplus at the end of the year, that we are going to pull from to cover these overages. The Legal Department, $75,000. The Police Department, $221,004. And Employee Benefits, specifically, the Reserve for Personnel is covering some of these overages in the personnel lines. That was an appropriate use of that particular line item, even though it wasn't budgeted for that purpose, but the money is there, so we're using that. So, so the first transfer we're looking for you to approve is the operating budget transfers totaling $310,400.
Is there a motion to approve operating transfers in the amount of $310,400 as detailed by Mary Jane, both verbally and in the documentation she's provided us?
I'll make that motion.
Second, second.
Second, any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds, all in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Sandy, hi.
Hi.
That's unanimous. Mary Jane?
Thank you.
Fund balance budget transfer.
Right, so the next, we're going to talk, here's your capital, Lou. So as we've been discussing throughout the year, we had some capital expenditures from funds that you and the Board of Finance have put away into special areas of fund balance, and here they are. So the first, again, if we start over on the right-hand side, Information Technology, Information Systems, we've had some new software, new services due to COVID and transparency and everything that we needed to do. And as we were doing those things, we knew that we were going to be using that set aside for technology. So that's $30,000, you'll see that $30,000 on the left-hand side coming from committed fund balance technology. The next of the three capital line items, Safe Streets Consulting Services, $210,000 coming from the committed fund balance for the transportation plan, which you guys approved the use of when you approved the Safe Streets Committee to move forward with their consulting services.
$210,000.
$210,000, what did I say?
210.
Oh, I'm sorry, $210,000.
Triple zeros, kind of weary out there.
I knew what I was talking about, but for the public, you're right.
That's up to Bill. Yeah, there you go.
So the next is a parking wreck tractor, which they were unable to get the year before. We put it into carried and forced, you'll see that. So we've brought that money back in for that same use. And the last item is the planning and zoning conification. If you remember, they came and needed the extra 50, and we chose to put it into the committed fund balance. So again, here, we have $327,200 worth of transfers. we chose to put it into the committed fund balance. So again, here we have three hundred and twenty-seven thousand two hundred dollars worth of transfers going into the budget from fund balance assigned in committed funds.
Questions? Same question on information systems. Any of that COVID-related, like this equipment or any of the other stuff?
Um, not as, we, we, we were, anything directly, this, all this room, we specifically had already covered that through FEMA. This, this is just some new stuff coming up. It's like the Zen City and that kind of.
Any other questions?
Yeah, anything that was, any, I should say that, anything that was reimbursed through any of the grants, FEMA or whatever, they're already taken out of here. You're not seeing them.
All right, hearing no other questions. Is there a motion to approve fund balance budget transfers in the amount of three hundred and twenty-seven thousand two hundred as detailed by verbally and in the documentation provided us?
Hang on, I'll second.
One second. Any further questions? Let me try your minds, all in favor.
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. That motion's unanimous.
Okay, so the, I guess it's the second document under this place. So here we have some additional fund balances, but here we have money that we were unable to spend in the budget that we were requesting get moved into fund balance for future use. So I'm gonna start at the top. Matt already mentioned this earlier in the, in the presentation. We did not use the services of the GCTV Public Information in the amount of sixteen thousand six hundred and fifty-eight thousand. We are requesting that that be transferred to committed fund balance technology. The next is the engineering department. Had a request from our town engineer to move contracted services in the amount of thirteen thousand five seventy-five and road striping in the amount of five thousand into the new year. She was unable to use that money. This and a number of items, we are moving into carried in force. And I just want to note that we're gonna be using carried in force far more than we have recently. In discussions that I've had with our auditors, they would prefer to have it done this way instead of issuing a purchase order for items that we have yet to spend. So little change of philosophy, from what I understand, is how we used to do it a number of years ago. And during auditing, for some reason that changed, and now it's changing back. So because I know the auditors are gonna make that recommendation through our management letter, I'm addressing it right, right away. So if we have an item that we're, that we just couldn't purchase at June thirty, but we're purchasing it now, we did issue a purchase order and taking care of that. These are for items that we don't have an absolute expense ready to go today. So that's starting with the engineering department. So the next, park and rec part-time salaries, I have a little asterisk. If you remember when you were working on the capital budget for the current fiscal year, and to reduce the capital budget, the park and rec department was asked to cover some of their capital from operating surplus in their budget. So we're looking to move thirty thousand from their operating budget surplus into carried in force for their, to have the additional money needed to cover the capital items that they weren't able, that we didn't put in the budget. I'm not, not sure if I'm explaining that very well.
And I remember this roller, because it came up a few.
Yes, yes, yes. So this is just in answer to your request that they, that they do so. So we're just pulling it out of salaries that could have come out of anywhere, but, you know.
Thank you for that reminder.
All right, so that's where that thirty thousand dollars comes from. So the next item is employee benefits. We had money left over, a hundred and ten thousand dollars in retirement sick leave, because, you know, a couple of the people we thought might be leaving us haven't. It's, it's an absolute estimate on human resources side. And so since we have that money budgeted and available, we are asking that it get moved into committed fund balance, retirement sick leave. And what we do with that, as that, as we build up that fund, when we're budgeting, when we come to you for a budget, we take that into consideration of what we ask. So we have a number that we think we might need. We take out what we have in fund balance and then we ask for the difference in the budget. So if you put more money in there, it'll hopefully reduce what we have to come through the regular budget.
So what this represents is, we had anticipated retirement sick leave in the amount of a hundred and ten thousand dollars, which didn't materialize.
Correct.
Not retire.
Right, they might.
It's not, it's not necessarily mean that they're not gonna be entitled to this unless they take a lot of vacation.
Right.
So.
Correct. The liability is still there, and that's what we're doing. We're covering that liability. We're taking it from this year and, and just moving it in. Similar to how we were doing with OPEB. We have an, we have a surplus this year. We've moved it into OPEB to, to use in the future. That's what we're doing with this.
So rather than have it drop to undesignated fund, it stays for this specific purpose.
Correct.
Pressing the specific.
Right.
Re-identified need.
Because we absolutely know the liability is there.
Got it.
The next are some capital items that people did not take care of at, at the end of the year. A lot of times in, in capital, and especially, especially in years where we aren't sure how the budgets are gonna end up, whether it's because of a storm, or COVID, or a loss in state revenue, we always try to hold off our capital purchases. Because those are the things that we can mitigate. You know, we can't stop paying people, but we can hold off buying a vehicle. So we have a number of them that are being carried over to carried in force. The first is the building department vehicle. She is working on having that. I think you're gonna see that on your next agenda, so that we'll be taking care of that. The next is twenty-five thousand dollars that we had set aside to do some site work at the waste transfer station that I think we're trying to build up a fund to get, to get some work done there. So we're gonna move that forward. The next is youth and family services carpet replacement. Because of their activity that, that they had and, and just how things were managed this past year, they weren't able to get that done. That's twenty-one thousand six hundred and seventy dollars. The next is we, the Board of Selectmen had budgeted to replace the technology equipment through GCTV. That was seventy-five hundred dollars. So, you know, I have it on this list. It's, it's money that, you know, you could use for another purpose. So I, carrying that, requesting that be carried forward as well. The next two items are, oops.
As we go through the deployment of this similar technology over at the community center, there is the possibility that, the strong possibility that we're gonna ask GCTV to provide some kind of interface so we can do live streaming. So they may still need to buy some equipment in order to facilitate live streaming. You know, this is a larger discussion as to what is the ongoing role for GCTV, you know, now that we have this kind of capacity. And I think for many of the major boards and commissions, we're gonna be, I think we can be in a hybrid mode for as long as we want to be, to, to better engage the community. So that, 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 that money could well be spent on some kind of interface equipment to allow them to do live streaming of our meetings.
So as I was saying, the last two items are public works. One was a pickup truck for thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and some road and drainage work for twenty-five thousand. So except for the items going into retirement sick leave and the technology, all the other, other items will be carried in force, and the total is three hundred and eighteen thousand two hundred and three dollars.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the fund balance transfers, budget transfers, in the amount of three hundred and eighteen thousand two hundred and three as described by Mary Jane in, in our documentation?
I'll move.
And second, second of my draws. Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sandy's an aye as well. Thank you. That motion's unanimous. Next up.
So the last thing I have is a transfer for special funds. So we had a lot of discussion regarding the driveway at Guilford, at the golf course. And the arrangement that we made, this, this group made with them, is that they would raise as much money as they could to cover the expense and that the town would, would cover the balance. So the, the total project was about twenty-four thousand dollars, and there's a difference of ten thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars, which I'm requesting be moved from surplus in the capital budget, since it is a capital item, into, to cover the, the, the need on that end, the other end.
Just a reminder that it was private donations that allowed that to happen. And, you know, after years of going up there, now seeing it as cleaned up as it is, it does make a, make a big difference in terms of the.
I'm, I, I support this, but I just have a question. When we committed to, when, when the commission came and spoke to us and, and asked us that we would underwrite if there was a balance needed, did we say, did we put in a mountain or not to exceed X, or we didn't do that?
No.
No, I don't think any dollar amounts were.
Okay, all right.
Because I think we had, we had the contribution amount.
Yeah.
Gonna make up the difference based on the bid price.
Right.
Okay.
Yes, Mary Jane, I'm not understanding the different funds that are involved in the special funds budget transfers.
So, so the, because Guilford Lakes Golf Course brought in donations specific for that, we put that project into our grant donation fund.
Specifically for the driveway.
Correct, just the driveway.
And where's it coming out of? General fund, operating capital, budget, special fund?
It, it's, it's not coming out of a special fund from the, it's coming out of the, our, your regular general fund budget in the capital lines. So there is, so there's a little excess money there. So if we budget, say, thirty thousand for a vehicle and we only spend twenty-seven, we got a little bit there. So all those little bits, instead of taking it from fund balance, I just thought we would just move it. I mean, we could take it from anywhere, but because it was a capital, it's really a capital item. It would have been in our capital budget if the town had paid for it. It's coming out of the, my recommendation was to take the excess in the capital budget in your general fund budget and just transfer that money over. In the same way, we would cover, you know, a, a road project, a grant that we had for a road project, and maybe there were some extra expenses that the grant didn't cover. We would, we, we would make a, you know, a transfer that way. So, but I'm happy to have that money come from another source, if you prefer. It's just a recommendation.
No, I think that makes sense.
So it's oper, it's general fund to the grant fund. And the grant fund, we consider a special fund, anything outside the general fund.
Now, these are all the transfers collectively. There are a lot of small, they're all small items. You've explained each one well, related, you know, where the money's coming from to where it's going to. I, I just can't help but feel that in each case, we're moving a little bit farther away from, you know, what people vote on. So I'm, I'm in favor, I'm supporting all of this, because it all makes sense to me, that the concept of it isn't totally sitting right with me.
It is, it's, it's something probably a hundred of the hundred and sixty-nine towns are sitting around their Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance doing at the same time. You know, it, the statutes allow the, you know, allow for, I totally, I, you know, I, I totally understand, but I, you know, I always say a budget, a budget is just that, a budget. You, you know, so we do the best we can and, and sometimes, sometimes we hit our mark and sometimes we don't. But I, I totally, I totally understand what you're saying.
So we're looking at, you know, Susan, you make a good point. Clearly, it's less than, what, less than one percent of our total operating budget. So.
Yes.
Your point is very well taken. You know, it, it does vary, but I think when people vote on something, it's, they're voting on estimates. Right? I think it actually says that on the documentation, estimate.
Right, estimates, yeah, right.
But your point is very well taken. And clearly, I think this year, we see more of them than we have in previous years, at least in my recollection, the last couple of years. And a significant number of those are due to pretty interesting variations of what's happened in our community, in our world.
Yeah, for sure. And even with, even with all that's happened, the amounts are, I don't wanna say minor, but they're.
They're modest.
It's modest. That's, you know, that's, that's a better word.
And I would support that even further and say, the tree line was the biggest item. We know that's been under budgeted for years. It's always been sort of something that frustrates me. There's obviously a need there, and so that's a pretty big portion of the total dollars. And frankly, this ten thousand some odd dollars, three hundred and forty-five dollars for the parking lot. I mean, they've essentially raised close to sixty percent of the money necessary for that parking lot. And they drove down the, they got a very good price for the work, and it looks fantastic. So that's a big number relative to this overall number. I, I'm not disputing the point you're making, because I totally, totally get it, but there's two outliers there that really drive this number up a little bit.
Yeah. And in each case, again, like I said, what, what we're using the money for is so logical compared to what we did originally.
Yeah.
There's a good connection on each one.
And then even that one percent number is probably pretty high, because we are moving some of these funds, this, they're going back into, or being carried in force. You know, three hundred thousand of those get just carried in force, right? So that's just, that's a time consideration. So, but, but points.
Well, you know, I understand, because I think Susan brought this up during budget season. It's real. I mean, there's no question that, you know, we all wish that budgets were precise, but they're not, number one. But what I think of is, what's the alternative at this point? We, we stop these projects and go back to the cycle again with them? I mean, that's why I can support making these transfers, because, yes, the voters voted on, on specific numbers and that type of thing, but they also voted on getting the job done in different departments. And I, I can appreciate philosophically what Susan is saying a hundred percent, but I don't, you know, I don't have an answer or an alternative.
And, and it's, it's, it's why I like to come each month. And, you know, sometimes I say it's not, you know, this isn't over yet, but we know this, you know, that there might be, you know, so I like to present to you possible overages on a, on a regular basis and explain, you know, that's why when we go through this, a lot of them we've already spoken of. And if at any time there is an issue, that would be the time to speak up and say, okay, we don't wanna see this line I Rover, and then we have to, you know, figure it out, which clearly, you know, we get our direction from you. I'm just presenting, you know, where we stand from, from month to month. So if there ever is a time where you feel something is not quite, you know, where you'd want it to be, we can talk about it at that time and see what we can do. But that's why I like to, you know, like, when I come here and I say, okay, we've already talked about these things, but, you know, here they are again. But, you know, that's, that's why it's important to have the monthly meetings, so that you're, hopefully, I don't like to come today with items that are smacking you in the face. You know what I mean? That, that's, that's my goal. That's my goal.
As long as we're not sitting, you know, we don't wanna be sitting here in a year saying, what was the transfer saying, but you were okay with this concept last year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
These all make sense.
Right, but again, every, you know, each year I would, you know, hopefully bring something to your attention before, you know.
And actually, I'm gonna revise my number again, back down, because the three hundred and twenty-seven fund balance transfers, that's money out of assigned funds into the use that we originally intended them for, right? Which, when we put those assigned funds together. Yeah, it shouldn't be. All set.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure you voted on the last one?
I thought, I thought we did.
Maybe.
Yeah, we did.
Okay. I know that.
Right, Grace, we voted on all three of them?
No, I didn't think the last one was voted on. You had the motion and the second one.
All right.
It's okay. That, that, well, that's, that's why we had discussion, because, yeah.
Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sandy?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion is unanimous.
Yes. So the last thing, I'll just say, I did provide you, none of the, I just wanna make sure, none of these transfers were done in real time. This is just, you know. Exactly, an illustration of what they would look like.
The production.
Correct, you know, should you approve them all. So this, I just, I think this is easier for you to see the, especially in the capital, where we had a large amount of money coming in. We had more going out, but, you know, the net effect still had a balance there. So Lou, I hope you had your answers.
Got it, sure did.
Questions answered.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mary Jane. And who misses, I could throw out of that again this evening.
You'll get to hear all of it again this evening.
We had a bunch, a bunch of people jump onto our meeting.
Well, no, I just realized that, but we're there. It's a setting that allows you to show the non-video participants, which is, should be a default setting, and I think Tony. And I think Tony and I will look on figuring that out, but that way we know who's on all the time.
Okay, that helps.
I realized that Cliff popped up and I said, oh, he must have been on voice only. So. All right, item five, Board of Ed Director of Operations, Cliff Gurnum, with the three items. Five dot one, discuss and take possible action to award commissioning of Melissa Jones HVAC system to consulting engineering services. Cliff?
Good afternoon. Thanks for having me. So we have two projects where we're looking at hiring commissioning agents to go through and review the plans and specifications. And then they go actually through the school and look at the equipment, make sure the equipment was installed correctly, make sure that everything is functioning per the plans and specs. And then they will often evaluate its operation to determine if there's enhancements that we can do to better, you know, utilize that equipment or make it more energy efficient. So we're looking at doing this at Melissa Jones School where we just installed the all the new HVAC equipment. The Standing Building Committee went out, we got two separate proposals, one from consulting engineering services, and the other one was Colliars. In this case, Melissa Jones CES was the lowest proposed bidder on the work. They're out of Middletown, Connecticut. And the building committee recommended awarding the work to them for fifteen thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. It would be taken out of a twenty eighteen nineteen bond, which presently has approximately a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars left in it.
Thank you, Cliff. Any questions? Hearing none. Is there a motion to award the commissioning of the HVAC system at Melissa Jones School to consulting engineering services, Inc. from Middletown, Connecticut for the total sum of fifteen thousand, four hundred and forty dollars?
Somewhat.
And a second?
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Let me try your mind. All in favor?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Thank you. Item five dot two, this is the same type of work for Baldwin Middle School, but this time it's the Colliers, right?
Correct. And we did discuss with the Standing Building Committee possibly combining the two projects and awarding to one vendor. But we actually felt it more appropriate to, to award to separate vendors so we could kind of test the waters with both of these commissioning agents. And that way we'd have a better handle on, you know, if one company is a little stronger than the other for future projects. So we are looking for you to award this project, the Baldwin Commissioning, two Colliers for twenty-one thousand, six hundred and ten dollars.
Cliff, oh, sorry.
This is coming out of the same bond, the eighteen nineteen bond.
Well, first of all, I'll move to, you know, approve this so we can get it on the table and go through. Is there a second?
Okay, Cliff, I had to go to the, the dictionary on commissioning agent. I hadn't seen that phrase before. Can you just sort of tell our listeners what that's all about? Describe their work.
Yeah, the commissioning agent really dives into all aspects of a project, reviewing how everything's supposed to work. They look at it in kind of two ways. They look at it as an engineering design team, but they also look at it as the practical end user. And they combine that knowledge for that project. And then they go through and evaluate everything that was installed, how it was installed, and then how it's working. And then they optimize it so it works as efficiently as possible in making sure that it's all correct. There have been times where a commission agent will come in, they'll find out that a fan is running backwards or a valve has been installed incorrectly, so you don't get the proper flow, that type of thing. So it actually will pay for itself in the long run a lot of times if they find just one or two errors.
So Cliff, I almost look at this as like an honors rep or a clerk of the works kind of arrangement?
Correct, it's similar to that.
So it's not, it's not redundant of that, just it happens to be on this size project, that's what they're called, whereas when you're doing a high school, you call it the honors rep?
Uh, yes.
Or clerk of the works? So it's a similar role?
It's similar roles, yes. I would say similar.
Excellent.
All right, thanks for that explanation.
So we have a motion and a second to award the commissioning of the HVAC system at Baldwin Middle School to Colliers from Madison, Connecticut for the total sum of twenty-one thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. Let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
That motion's unanimous. Five dot three, this one is a little different. Cliff?
Yes, so this project here, we're looking at the replacement of the roof on Baldwin Middle School. It presently has a roof that was installed in two thousand and six. It's a EPDM roof, which is a rubber membrane type of roof. It's presently holding up pretty well, but it is getting towards the end of its life cycle. We are combining this project with the balance of the energy performance contract for the solar piece. We're trying to find an additional location for the the balance of the solar as part of that energy performance contract in Baldwin's a perfect location. We didn't want to install the new solar on an old roof, so it made sense to combine the two projects and replace the flat roof and also go to the state as one big project where we can get state reimbursement for both the roof and the solar, which will help pay for a good portion of the project itself. So, you know, normally get back approximately about thirty percent. So we get thirty percent on the solar piece and up to thirty percent on the roof based upon its age. So it may be slightly prorated because we're not at twenty years yet. But we will get a considerable amount back by doing the project as a state project. So the Standing Building Committee reviewed the proposals, they're recommending moving forward with Hibbert and Rosa Associates, architects rather, from Middletown, Connecticut in the amount of sixteen thousand dollars. It will be pulled from a bond from twenty fifteen sixteen, which has approximately two hundred and fifty thousand left in that balance.
Great. Cliff, thank you. Is there a motion to award architectural services for the partial roof replacement at Baldwin Middle School to Hibbert and Rosa Architects of Middletown, Connecticut for the total sum of sixteen thousand dollars?
Somewhat.
And a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Add one, Cliff. The, the utilization of the solar that was previously scheduled for what, Public Works, I believe it was? Will we still, are still entitled to the Z-Rex credits, the, those energy, those credits?
Yes, we are. That's why we're kind of moving forward with this project relatively quickly is to make sure that we can hold on to those Z-Rex and have the project underway prior to the deadline of those Z-Rex, which I believe is the beginning of July of next year.
And, and are those Z-Rex included in the, the thirty percent numbers that you talked about before? Or is that in addition to the thirty percent contribution from the state for the roof itself and for the, for the solar?
That's in addition to, so you have even a larger, you know, payback on it.
Right. And I know there was discussion at the board of, at the Standing Building Committee meeting in terms of doing a cost analysis, the possible offset because the roof has not reached the state's, the current roof has not reached the state's minimum. That, that offset the state will more than be covered by the Z-Rex. Is that, is that, is my understanding correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Great, thank you. All right, any other questions? Hearing none. Let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Motion is unanimous. Thank you, Cliff.
Thank you. Have a great day.
You too. Okay, item six, Town Planner, George Grau, six dot one, consider and take possible action on the purchase of vehicle off a state contract. George?
Yep, thank you for listening to me. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm hoping that you will approve a requisition to purchase a new vehicle for the Planning and Zoning Department to replace an antiquated truck vehicle that the zoning enforcement officer uses for most of her work. It's a vehicle that's required to access construction sites. So we, we have some special criteria for it, but the current vehicle that we're using, which is a retired police Ford Explorer, I believe it is, is quite old and requiring quite a bit of maintenance. So off of the state bid contract and in, in pursuant to the capital budget that was approved, we're seeking approval of the purchase of new vehicle. This is the same vehicle that we now have two of in the engineering department. It's a Nissan Rogue. The purchase price is twenty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ten cents. And I'm hoping you'll approve it. We, we did try to, tried to find something that was a hybrid type vehicle, which we were not able to find that met our criteria and met our budget and also was available in the near term. As you may know, motor vehicle purchases are very difficult right now. There's a shortage. So we did find a bit, the vehicle that we wanted on the lot. So we're hoping that you'll approve this and we can move forward with it.
Thank you, George. I think we had a similar explanation back in budget preparation time on this vehicle that you need needs. It's unfortunate that the hybrid vehicles have not developed throughout the, you know, the range of vehicles that we need to purchase. Time will get, we'll, we'll get there eventually. But I appreciate you going to, into that detail again. So any, first off, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve this purchase.
And a second? Any further comments or questions? No? Let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. George, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item seven, discuss and take possible action to approve a contract with revised upgrade and host the town of Guilford website. Tracy, you want to handle this one, or is Tony going to handle it? Who's?
I'll get a little bit of both.
Okay. Well, first, first off, I want to thank the two of you for taking the lead on this project. The documentation you provided us clearly shows that we're a little, little overdue in terms of the technology we're using on our website. So I thank, I want to thank the two of you, plus as you mentioned, Ellen Klow, and Scott Carl, who participated in, in your, your team. So the floor is yours.
Well, Tracy did most of the work. We looked at three companies, Revis, Civic Plus, and then a final site. We all voted, we unanimously picked Revis for various reasons. The content, editing the content was easy. They all use their own proprietary content management to edit the site, but we found that Revis was the easiest. There, there's a lot of additional features, like going forward between what we use now to, to these guys, they're, it's like way better. We were kind of unhappy with our current hosted site, the company in general, you know, I don't want to really want a bad mouth on video here. But we weren't getting, we're not getting a lot of response and functionality with it. So that's kind of the reason why we started a lot looking, other than that we're like eleven years overdue. I don't, I can't even believe it's been that long.
I remember the day. You'd have most back to one year into my first term, and we thought it was a big deal then.
Yes, yeah. This one is going to do, you know, a lot of things, a lot of forms editing online. The big, the big thing is signing up for notifications. So an end user can log in, say they want, you know, specific meetings, check it off. They could get an email alert when it's been published. You could go with SMS or texting. That's an additional cost, but we didn't add that in just yet.
How about the different applications, like, you know, just for signage and things like that? Will that all be able to be done online?
Yeah.
Tony, you, you mentioned several of the features and functions that make it easier for our side of the equation. I'm assuming that because the technology is a little bit newer than the two thousand and ten, that ease of use and navigation by our community of users is going to be something that will, will clearly be easier for the user experience.
Right, a lot easier. And, and the mobile, you know, you know, a lot of people are mobile now. The mobile site will be a lot better. And I think, Tracy, I don't know, in that email, there was probably a couple of links that you could go on, grout in and maybe another one, and check how theirs are. And also check it with your mobile device, and you probably could see that the navigation will be a lot easier. We're also, we're also going to have, hopefully it works out, the kind, the, the departments will be able to edit their own page. And we'll start off with like one and then move it up so they can add, delete content, you know, at, at will. But they would only have access to their department and no one else. Like, like, say, as an example would be economic development. They could at their page add what they want on it, remove what they want.
Is there going to be a central clearing? Are you saying that any department is going to be able to modify this website?
Their department page only.
That's the pitch. The information, updating like programs and
Right, however they want to word their main page.
That's currently the way it's done with Park and Rec is a clear example of that. Police is actually, police and fire have their own sites, but we are in discussions with having them migrate to this platform as well.
Yeah, and that'll be like a test phase.
It's, it's not unusual for some of the departments to have their own site administrator in, in terms of the things that they, they change. Anything that's substantive relative to positions or content that would all come back to me. This is basically to manage their pages in terms of information flow in and out.
Yeah, and say, say Tracy's on vacation or not here, or I can't get to it, they, they'll be able to do it themselves.
Can I ask about data security? If, if data security and such cyber matters were an important part of your process comparing the proposals?
Yeah. Yes, definitely. And, and there's, there's, there's in Civic Plus, we're both kind of equal, but overall, overall, we went with Revis. You know, when the, when the sales rep there talked about security, he, he said, I don't, Tracy, didn't he say he's, they've never been compromised? I don't even want to jinx it, but I know, I know. I'm repeating what he said, that's all.
And, and just, just for clarification purposes, this is a hosted service, correct?
Correct.
So they build security systems for their network and their, and their hosted services. So we're basically getting the same level of security and services that they do for their clients throughout the country.
Correct.
You have a pretty impressive list of towns that they serve, right?
Yeah.
Yes, and that, that was another thing we noticed
Yeah.
With our current, our current company that we used, we noticed on their site, and Tracy, I, I think can agree with me, that a lot of them kept disappearing from their list of, of clients. And we were like, oh, where, where's everyone going? And then we started seeing that it was either Revis or Civic Plus that people were moving towards. You know, it kind of gave us a little wonder what's going on here.
Okay. All right. Other questions of Tony or Tracy?
Is motion this or just?
Well, that's it. I'm just about, I just want to confirm because there was nothing in the documentation on the question, in the fit itself, yeah. The revised quote, page forty-six of sixty-two on Revis, shows grand total first year of nineteen thousand, one hundred dollars and the second year an onward investment, which is a licensing and management fee of thirty-nine hundred. So we're approving nineteen thousand, one hundred dollars in year one and thirty-nine hundred dollars. So we're approving $19,100 in year one and $3,900 in the subsequent two years on a contract to revise for our website redesign and implementation. Mary Jane?
I'd just like to add that that is part of the technology reserve in the, in our fund balance. Remember when we put that money in, the website was one of the items we listed as the use of that money? So you'll hear me coming back looking for that. I'm already asking for more money.
Perfect. All right. So is there a motion to approve, to approve the contract with revised in the amount of $19,100 for year one, $3,900 in subsequent, subsequent years, two and three? Is there a motion? I'm moving. Second?
Second.
Any further questions or comments? I have none other than thank you for the work and the homework you did on this, Tony, Tracy, Ellen and Scott. So thank you very much. With that, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Exciting.
Yes, it is progress. All right. You ready? Item seven, discuss and take possible action, oh no, excuse me, discuss on renewing the land acquisition open space bond. So Gary and Kevin from our land acquisition, we've been talking about this for, for some time. We, it was a very successful program that was put in place in what, 2004, 2005? Back that way?
Early 2000.
2000.
2000, I think it was 2000, yeah.
Fall of 2000.
Fall of 2000. And to date, it was originally a $5 million bond. To date, I believe we've expended everything short of about a million dollars, but we will be utilizing some of that for our recent purchase of the, the land up on Route 80.
So we cut that about in half.
So we, so we decently cut it back, so. And there are, there continue to be other properties that land acquisition has their eye on, some of which we've talked about in executive session, some of which we may talk about in executive session later today. So you guys want to?
Sure.
I, I can rip half of this off. Kim Brockett, who of Land Acquisition is also on it, we see.
Hi, Kim.
Hi, Kim. Let me just get, briefly give you the summary. In the fall of 2000, the unit, the Board of Selectmen, which was led by Sam Bartlett, Gene Bishop and Janet Post unanimously voted to move forward on a $5.1 million bond. Subsequently, the Board of Finance, led by some guy named Matt Hoey and, and six other people unanimously voted to move forward on the bond. As of now, a little over, including the, we haven't quite funded, but including what's committed, a little over 90% has been utilized in 21 years. And, and you know, think about it, took 20 years to use it. But that was part of the strategy is but that by having availability, it allows the Land Acquisition Commission to go negotiate and say, we can fund this. We know we can fund this relatively easily as long as it's gone through the approvals. And then, you know, you can get grants, you can get state funding, you can get other sources contributions for it. So it doesn't necessarily have to be used for each negotiation. But it, the fact that you have it in your back pocket makes it very, very useful. I would review it, just for those that aren't familiar with it, the steps that it would take to purchase something, as we're going to do hopefully later today. You get initial review by the Board of Selectmen on the approval for some of the documents, like an appraisal. So the, the Board of Selectmen gets to weigh in. If we bring some property and the Board of Selectmen say, that's stupid, we don't ever want to talk about that, it could theoretically end right there. So you get an informal review by the Board of Selectmen. Then it goes back and, and negotiation takes place and it recommended by the Land Acquisition Commission to the Board of Selectmen, which must, must pass it. Then it goes to a town meeting so that any acquisition of property must be approved by a town meeting. Then it gets approved by the Board of Finance. So all of these steps are involved. So it, it's not the land acquisition or Kevin or any of us that they get to approve this. I mean, there's multiple checks and balances, but it's very, very useful.
Gary, if I would just, you did omit one other step. And it's typically you guys come back to us before you start negotiating. We give you a price range. You, you make a recommendation.
Possibly.
As to what you think should be, and we have typically set parameters around that.
Mostly, on the, on the other hand, you know, there are some small properties necessarily where the appraisal comes in and, you know, it, it's, it is what it is. And we negotiate and say, this is the appraisal, this is the price.
But I just, the point is.
There's extra steps.
The Acquisition Committee is not making the financial decision independently.
Correct. And, and typically there, there may be multiple steps where it's come before the Board of Select, Select. 20, 21 years ago, 5.1 million was approved. Going back to the US government's inflation numbers, that number today would be about $9 million. We, we are in the process of reviewing properties that are available. One of the things that we, we looked at is a BU study by a professional group affiliated with BU, which has noted that land on the East Coast is substantially above price increases for the country, which is part of the national statistics. So one might argue that some number beyond inflation might be appropriate for discussing. I will tell you that the Land Acquisition Commission has recommended that we request the bond be placed at $15 million. We're here to sort of test that out and, and see what, what seems reasonable. I, I would argue that the original bond was two and a half million for B and C properties, which are commercial use, typically smaller properties, and two and a half million for open space. I would argue that, that the new bond should be two and a half to $3 million for B and C properties because there aren't that many large ones left in the balance for open space. But again, that's subject to discussion. So that's where we're. I, I will also point out that to the best of, of my research, the Land Acquisition Fund was used to acquire 11 parcels, some of which got partially reimbursed when a grant came in after the fact. But also, we have to buy it and then the grants, as you know, come in six months, a year, two years later, or don't come in at all, as, as, as we discovered with the East River Preserve, where the federal grant came in and the state grant did not. So that, you know, we have to be in a position to commit to the entire purchase upfront and then negotiate the others. So with that, I opened up the comments, discussion.
I heard you speak about, you know, property values and, you know, the costs and that type of thing. But I, I wanted to hear what you had to say about what you felt are needs going forward. I mean, it's one thing, sure, property is going to come up for sale, but you know, that is an reason to buy it.
Correct. We, we could easily find properties which we, we have estimated to be in excess of $20 million. These may or may not, some of them are multi-generational properties and may never come on the market till generations long past, but long past us.
Coming on the market isn't a reason to buy them.
Not necessarily, but there is a.
Some which meet some of our plan and conservation goals, some of which meet or written up as properties within the farm study we did quite a few years ago in preserving farmland, other open space, other open space attached to town lands. So those are, and those generations of farmers are disappearing where there's the cost of maintaining a farm where if you buy development rights of a farmer, buy the farm and you do the licensing that we do on other properties, we can still maintain agriculture on town and maintain some of these farms, which go hand in hand with the sustainable Guilford thing here, maintaining agriculture and having fresh food and stuff available for us. If you don't know the cost of energy and what's going to happen in the future. So you want to preserve some of these open, larger properties like this for, for future needs there.
You know, Charlie, you raise a good point. And I, I believe at one point the Land Acquisition Committee had a list of targeted properties that if everything fell into place, would be good for one reason or another for the community, whether it's just pure open space, whether it's preservation, whether it's environmental concerns. So is that, is that a, what's that? Department needs.
Or department.
Yeah, and, and, and that's the B to C, you know, as well, right?
Right, yep.
So, yeah, because I, I don't think that list ever included an alternate site for public works, did it? That list ever included an alternate site for public works?
I think originally, I think it did have that piece that we actually did buy.
Okay.
Was actually not on the list there.
Not necessarily for that purpose, but that, that property that we bought.
Had been targeted.
Had been targeted.
So can you share that with us, that list? Is that?
There's a draft currently being, there's a draft currently being developed.
But how do you come before us, you know, with a number, a new, potentially new number, without having that list yet?
The, the list, for a number of reasons, has, and, and the old list never became a public document for the reason that we don't necessarily want everybody to be negotiating against ourselves.
I mean, I just, you know, I'm not trying to make it public. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to relate one to the other.
I mean, technically.
I don't worry if this number came from, besides inflation.
We did, we did look at a draft list here, but technically if we have an official list, it's reliable, so it's sort of maintained as a.
We have.
Draft.
But isn't your list simply all the property that existed on the place?
No.
No.
No, it's properties.
It's broken down to different categories. Is it near?
And it's.
Existing open space, existing town space, does it create a green light? Does it protect waterways? Is it critical for coastal resilience?
I mean, you say you're creating, I mean, is this a month's project or the rest of the year?
The rest of the year. I mean, it's, it's been matrixed.
Well, I think the timing is good. And if you say the end of the year, because we wouldn't put a question up until the next referendum anyway, right? I mean, picking a number for the bonding, that's not the end of the world because we have to improve each thing anyway.
Right.
But, you know, picking a number out of the air, saying, you know, this is your wish, let's go spend it.
I, yeah, I, I guess I would argue with the wish list and call it a targeted list. I mean, I, I would go back to, to, to two items or to one event. When we acquired the East River Preserve, 88% of the people that voted, voted in favor of open space. So it is clearly.
I don't argue that at all.
Okay.
And I, I don't have any problem with setting aside, you know, or developing a fund to set aside to be ready. Because I agree with you, when opportunities arise, you know, it is good to be in a position, positive position rather than coming up from behind. I, I have no problem with that at all. I just, I'm hesitant about tripling our, our number and I can appreciate inflation and the rest of it and everything, but I'd like to have some, something tangible to, to pin that number.
I think when we finish up our list.
I, I, I think that list of properties in executive session will be, will be illuminating at best. Let's also not forget that if it takes us another 20 years to spend whatever it is, that, that will be less, it, it won't be worth the $10 million it is today.
Right.
You know, if, if present, if future worth, whatever it is, present cost, future worth or whatever.
Right.
So that, that, you know, if it's five or if it's, you know, if it's five, then it's really only going to be worth, you know, 2.5, 20 years from now. So, but, but I think, I think that list is critical for us to have an understanding of, of, of the rationale that you're going to use to come up with a number.
Sure. And like Matt said earlier, there's the check and balances built into it. It's not like wish list from the commission here. It's goes to you guys, potentially back to the Board of Finance for final bond draw up or authorization at the end there.
The other thing we got to look at when we have that list and it starts getting into it, you know, a bunch of time or whatever it is. You know? When do we reach a medium or a balance? I mean, how much property, you know, are we going to take off the tax rolls? Does it have a defined purpose? I can appreciate the purposes that you outlined and they are real. There's no question about it, but there comes a balance. I mean, what percentage are we at now and that type of thing?
But, I mean, I think one of our members on the board, unfortunately Kevin Clark's not here, and have invited him to another meeting and as we go further, further here, is the cost of actually maintaining open space land and not develop land because there is a high cost of development to the community.
I appreciate it. Those are the kinds of balances that I, I would like to have a little better handle on, frankly.
So between the two pieces of paper, we should be able to help.
Get that together.
Great.
So we'll look for over the next couple of months, maybe that list.
Can we bring back Jim O'Keefe to give us the analysis that he did on the East River Preserve?
What was that?
That, that the cost of not buying it would far exceed the cost of buying it. When, when you go through expansion of education, expansion of roads, expansion of public works, expansion of police and fire services, et cetera, there's, there's a lot of data, not specific to Guilford, but, but specific to the state, various other sources, which indicate that, that development turns out to be more costly than non-development.
I remember the question. Don't, don't get me there. That's a separate whole discussion. Philosophically, I, I understand completely where you're coming from.
Right.
There comes the task.
Can I just chime in quickly?
Certainly, Kim.
The, I mean, the, the only point I will make, and I've brought this up at many commission meetings as well, is a way to, to do both, keep something in agriculture and to also keep it on the tax rolls, is to work with the state programs to buy development rights. And it's something that's only been done in Guilford once up on the Durham line. If you look at the town of Lebanon, for example, they've, they, they rank the highest in the state. I think they've got five or 6,000 acres under that program. So again, they're getting tax revenue. There'll never be, there's never be houses built on that. But they're going to maintain the open space. So that's, that's a huge piece to consider when you're looking at some of these parcels as well.
Yeah, thank you for that. That's great clarification, great point.
Can I just make one comment request? I don't know. In addition to these sort of targeted properties and the things you guys have been talking about, it would be kind of helpful to just sort of see a quick mission statement. This is the mission of this bonding. Yeah, maybe have it, and I just haven't seen it. But I think that would go a long way to, you know, identifying some of the, sort of the fuzziness of what's there. I think it's been fantastic and I, it's come up a number of times and I've supported many projects.
Okay.
But I think it's helpful for the rest of the world.
Okay. I mean, we review the, the mission of the Land Acquisition Commission as stated in the, the town ordinances.
Right. At, at some point, I think, you know, the commission would take a vote to recommend to this board and then would include the rationale for it, which I think is what Lou was trying to get through.
Yeah, when the motion comes from Ross, we'll see what, how you phrase that.
Yeah, we, we perceive this meeting as an opportunity to explain to you and to the public what our thinking is and maybe get some feedback on whether we're accurate whistling Dixie.
I think the, the, the number, the final number, notwithstanding, my answer is yes, this is worth pursuing again. And it was a very successful program. And particularly when you, you talk about the opportunities that Kim just mentioned, which is to preserve land, keep it on the tax rules, but by the development rights from it. So there's, there's, there's a couple of ways that this could be beneficial. I agree completely. I mean, I, you know, there's no question that I, I think it should be pursued, but I do think exploring, you know, whether it be a mission statement or whatever, where we are going forward with, you know, the title of land acquisition. I mean, it's, it's just strictly open space. it's just strictly pro open space, you know, people gotta know about it, a lot of it is very variable. But if it's more than that, you know, I think that's good too, so I support it completely and I certainly think it's worth pursuing. But I think we gotta build a case.
Our, our last, the last three rec, properties recommended and approved were B and C properties. Non-open space properties. So.
And that's, you know, that's what we, that's what we wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and that's probably helpful, would be a listing of those and other properties that we acquired with this funding. And and what, and what category they were in.
Having this funding mechanism in place, it's kind of hard to imagine how you could negotiate something without, without having this.
Right.
So are we unusual in Guilford?
Yes. I don't think very many towns have done this, although more are doing it, I think Middletown just approved one recently and I think Woodbridge has approved it, but Mary Jane, I don't know if your, if finance directors have a, have a resource on that, I don't think too many towns have done it.
Mitch is here, maybe Mitch, we could reach out to CCM to see if other municipalities have open space bond authorizations and approvals in place, so that's a, that's a quick call to CCM, they'll do a little research on it, so. Good. All right, well, thank you, we're gonna hear from you again in a little bit.
Yep. Yep.
Okay. Item nine, discuss and take possible action, set a public hearing date for revised date, August thirty first at eight thirty AM via Zoom, assess residence for the Mulberry Point Water Project. As per the ordinance, when the ordinance is approved to move forward with the water main project down in Tuttles Point, Mulberry Point, Long quote, the, we are required to have a public hearing to officially establish the assessment for each one of the properties by which the, the water main goes by. The ordinance is, you know, very definitive about those properties that we'll have to share in this assessment. So we're basically taking, I think it's whatever, whatever number, six million or something, no, it's not, it's not six million. Because we all have all kinds of grant funds, it's probably three million around that number. Three point four, is that what the revolving loan fund is, three point four million? And that gets assessed against the hundred and fifty-one properties currently. So there is a requirement that we hold a public hearing to officially notify.
Is there gonna be, I assume somebody's doing a calculation going into this?
Oh, Mary Jane's.
Is it a, what if, you know, a footage in the front?
No, this is, this is a straight split, it's, if the water main goes by your property, you can get, you get, you get assessed one share of the hundred and fifty-one shares of it. And, and, and what we've been doing, we've moved forward to pick up some additional capacity on our tax collector software. This is gonna require, we're gonna do two billings for a year for, for, for the water assessment. We're doing October and April, October one and April one, off cycle for these folks. They have the, that's, that's if they opt to take the twenty-year option, which is at a two percent interest rate as per the original contract with, or not contract, but the award from the Clean Water Revolving Fund. And so if they opt to do it, it's a two percent payment over twenty years being placed on the property. However, if you want to pay the, what's the number currently, well, I don't want to share at this point.
Rather not share.
Yeah, right. Then it becomes a public number, right? But that, if you pay it up, up, upfront, you're done.
Does, does the calculation include both building lots and, and properties that have the potential to subdivide?
Yes, it does, right. My understanding.
I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not.
By the way.
I can't imagine that, there's too many.
There's nobody that's got an opportunity to subdivide those lots.
He almost had the opposite problem, people would be consolidating two separate lots.
Yeah.
In which case they'd have doubled the hit.
If it's, yeah.
Bellevue's can be very creative.
Uh, but if someone hooks up after the fact, Charlie?
That's what I tried to get.
They pay the assessment, they pay the same assessment price.
I thought there was some.
Pay it one time.
Yeah, you have to pay it one time.
It's the only opportunity you have to pay for that assessment over twenty years and hem shot.
So you never know how it's gonna turn out, so you know, be ready.
Okay, is there a motion to set that meeting for August thirty first at eight thirty AM?
Some moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Any further comments or questions? Are you done, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Sandy?
Hi.
That motion, that motion carries unanimously. Okay. Item ten, discuss and take possible action on noise ordinance variance application was submitted by Stephen Terary, care of the Paul Dossi K A R E fund, for those who do Paul, from so many, so many good things in this community. And he was a friend of mine, so I just, I'm sorry. Anyway, this fundraiser will be held at at the.
Fireman.
Fireman's Field. At Long Hill Road on October sixteenth or seventeenth, it's a rain day, two to ten PM. An estimated between five hundred and a thousand, I tell you, I will tell you, the first fundraiser they did was at Thimble Island Brewery and it was outrageously attended.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
They raised huge amounts of money, so, so anyway. Is, just as a note, alcohol beverages will be sold or served by Thimble Island Brewery. Provided by Thimble Island Brewery and they will have a state temporary liquor permit. And the application has been approved and signed by Chief High, so. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Second, any comments or questions?
Sounds like a great time.
It is, I'll probably be there. Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi, Sandy? Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Item eleven, act on resignation received from Mark Allegrini and Scott Beers from the Sustainable Task Force, I'll make that motion with appreciation and regret as well as thanks for the service. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Hi.
Sandy?
Hi.
Item two, act on a resignation received from Clerk and Kate Dunn from the Human Services Council, I'd also like that, make that motion with appreciation, regret and thanks, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Uh, right, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Hi.
Sandy's eye, good. Uh, item three, act on the appointment of Christine Fappiano to the Human Services Council, is there a motion?
Sure.
And a second? Yeah, good, thank you Charles, let me try your minds, all in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Sandy's an eye, thank you, that's, the motion is unanimous. Uh, item four, act on the appointment of members to the government Fair Day Committee. Give you a little background here on the Fair Day Committee. The Rotary used to basically manage the Fair Day Parade. Uh, and they no longer are, are have the capacity or they have the volunteers to do it. However, there have been some folks who stepped up to, to move and, and fill the void, if you will. And I think the list is here, right? Sorry, that isn't what I wanted to do. Okay, close it, there we go, Fair Day Parade Committee, thank you. All right, so is there a motion to appoint the Guilford Fair Day Parade Committee with the following members, Debbie Palouse, Chris Fappiano, Lauren Gunning Smith, Bob Jacob, Dee Jacob and Nicole White? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion, but, or, or I'll second it, but I have a question, so.
Certainly, so you've, I think the motion was made and you've seconded Sandy and your question is?
So is this, is this an official committee of the town now, I mean, is the town sort of basically assuming the responsibility for the parade going forward?
Uh, it is assuming the responsibility for the planning function, the fundraising function will continue to be, to, to do it privately. At this point, because it's so late in the game, I am prepared as part of the economic development utilization for the art funds to fill the void for what they can, from what they can raise and what, what, what the total cost is. They have, we already have, Mary Jane, what is it, about four thousand dollars on board, is that the number, is it about four thousand dollars that they've been able to raise? So it's a very good question, Sandy, this is obviously an attempt to continue to have it as a citizen-driven engagement and that's why we're gonna put this commission together, the committee together.
And I just wanted to say one word in support of the Rotary. The Rotary Club of Guilford took the management over about, I guess, five years ago. And they felt that they had, I was not, I'm not on that committee, but I'm a member of Rotary. They felt they would have to make this decision by February and they decided that in light of this COVID situation it was, they were not going to have the parade because at that point it was up to them, so. But I know that many Rotary members are still going to assist on the day of. And, yeah, so I just wanted to make sure that Rotary didn't get a bad name here.
Oh, no, 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 that was not, that was not the intent.
No.
But, but, but let's, let's also not forget that two years ago, we established a contribution that was to go to the Rotary of a thousand dollars a year in our annual budget in support of the fair owing to the fact that some of their other primary, prime sponsors had started to cut back on what they were allocated, so.
Right.
All right. All right, um, did we, okay, you questioned, we had the motion, that was a question, okay, any other questions? So let me try your minds, all in favor?
Hi.
I.
Thank you Sandy, that motion carries unanimously. Uh, item twelve, requests for use of town property. Where the first one is a withdrawal, act on a request from American Legion Post forty-eight, he was agreed September eleventh, twenty twenty-one for a re-plant ceremony in remembrance of nine eleven. This is being pulled because of, uh, uh, action two, item two on this list, which is they're combining with the VFW to do a single event. Both of them are coming at it singularly, but they've agreed to do it together. That's gonna be a busy day, isn't there a golf tournament that day, Lou?
Yeah, I think so.
Up at Guilford Lakes. Up at Guilford Lakes and also it's gonna be a busy day on the green because that's a closer to free ride. They can't, the, you know, having the closer to free cancer ride, so, anyway, on the first, is there, is there a motion to withdraw?
Uh, yeah, I'll make that motion to allow that withdrawal.
Second, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi, Sandy?
Hi.
Thank you, that motion carries unanimously. Uh, item two, act on a request from the VFW to use the green September eleventh, twenty twenty-one for a nine eleven memorial service, is there a motion?
Yeah, make the same motion.
And a second, and a second.
Same motion, the motion to approve that one.
Yeah, and, and I wanna, I wanna thank Steve Sporel and Larry Santa Maria from VFW as well as the folks at the American Legion Post forty-eight for pulling this together.
I'm working.
Hard to believe, twenty years.
Yeah, fantastic.
All right, um, motion there, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi, Sandy?
Hi.
Motion carries unanimously. Uh, item three, act on a request from the Park and Rec Department to use the green September thirtieth, October thirtieth for scarecrows on the green and October twenty-fourth, rain day, October thirty-one is for the Halloween spooktacular, it's back. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Hi.
Sandy?
Hi.
Motion carries unanimously, uh, act on a request from the Soccer Club of Guilford to place a sign on the green advertising its registration, sign placement eight sixteen to eight twenty-eight, is there a motion?
Make the motion.
The second, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Sandy?
Hi.
That motion carries unanimously. Item five, twelve dot five, brother, act on a request from the Christ Episcopal Church to place a sign on the green advertising its tag sale taking place September twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth in twenty twenty-one, sign placement nine ten to nine twenty-five, is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And a second, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi, Sandy?
Hi.
Motion carries unanimously. Twelve dot six, act on a request from the Guilford Free Library to place a sign between advertising its book sale, is there a motion?
All moved.
Got in there.
A second?
Second.
Thank you Charles, uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Stay, use those hearing none, that motion carries and it was necessary to say that. Committee reports, anything, Sandy, is there any updates on the affordable housing?
No, not, not this month.
Thank you. All right, correspondents, we got the building report, any comments or public works monthly report, any comments on same? Hearing none, move on. Old business, I had one, I don't have old business, something I brought up, uh, at least a month ago, maybe a little bit longer. Uh, and that is the possibility of a combined economic development position between Guilford and Madison. And you have in front of you a job description and a possible contract. We have Mitch is on the line, so we'll pipe in here, Mitch has been working with Deb Malardo, the, the HR Director over in Madison. They have, Madison has met with Sherri Cody, both the first select woman and I believe some other select persons. Uh, and their economic development coordinator, Ryan Dukes, I believe. And they are fully supportive of this combined role. Madison is intending to pay for their portion of it with American Rescue Plan Funds, which is an allowable use underneath the, the eligibility, the expense eligibility. This will now be a full-time position, which includes benefits, so it's gonna be, it's gonna cost us more as well. And it'll be my intention to use the same American Rescue Plan Funds to pay for the excess on what we are currently paying Sherri today. And the contract term is, you'll see, is two years, it's a, it's a definitive term because in twenty twenty-four, the American Rescue Plan Funds expire. And at that point, the towns, the two towns will determine whether or not it's something they want to move forward with. And if so, then they're gonna have the budget for it out of operating expenses. So that's, that's the background, Mitch, anything else you want to add?
Just, I'm not sure if they have a copy of the proposed contract there or not, but Chris Hodgson's got it. Okay, Chris Hodgson's gone through it extensively and I just, while you were on your Board of Select meeting, Chris is sitting next to me, we're gonna come down there in a few minutes for executive session. But Chris has made a number of good changes to it that are, that are protective of the, of the town and of Sherri. And I sent it to you, Matt, and to Peggy Lyons to review. You know, nothing, nothing substantial's changed, but there's a lot of contract language that needs to be cleaned up, so. But otherwise, you were trying to move forward with that, with both the job description and of course, the, the employment contract.
Thank you, okay, so, questions, comments?
I have a question, two questions. Will Sherri physically continue to be based in Guilford or will she be, be working one town some days and one town the other days?
She's gonna work, she's gonna work in both towns, provided they have space for her over in Madison, which I think they're trying to work out. Obviously, we have space here that she's gonna be able to continue to use.
And then, if we're using the American Rescue Funds, she's currently being paid on, on a part-time level through our town, so will that be some extra money for us for the next two years?
I, I haven't made that determination, that is already an expense that we have on our books and our budget. Uh, and what, clearly one of the, the carve-outs is you cannot reduce the impact on, to taxpayers, you can't do, use it to reduce taxes, so. If we then go and start using these funds to pay for the services that we've already budgeted for, we might find ourselves in violation of if not just the spirit, but the letter of the, the regulations.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. All right, so, a, at this point, we're waiting for Madison to, to agree to these terms, although this, this has been a back and forth with, with Mitch and Deb Malardo over on their side. And it's my understanding that the Board of Selectment has to officially approve it, but they've agreed in principle to move forward with the, the sharing arrangement, so. And that's your understanding?
As well, that's my understanding as well, that they want to have a final contract, I believe it's next week, that they, I think it's next Monday that they meet and we're just trying to get, you know, tie up the loose ends here so that when they, when their Board of Select meets and actually has to approve the contract, that we're all set.
So we don't, we don't actually have the final contract in front of us now, so this one will go back over to Madison, the one that Chris is gonna revise.
Yeah, it's revised, like I say, Matt, you and Peggy now have a copy as of about a half an hour ago.
Okay.
So is this approval of this contract with this person or is this approved forward, this is how it's kind of been?
Uh, this is this person, this contract for a definitive time period. Okay. That's it, this is.
Do we have to move on this contract? Do we have to move on this contract?
No, we don't have to. I, you know, but I just wanted to bring you guys up to date on where we were with this. And again, you know, how many, how long have we been hearing about regionalization and doing something along with regionalization? Supposedly, there's, there's supposed to be some rewards.
This is a nice way to try it.
Yeah.
It's a good little test to see what's going on, and we're starting with our person.
Exactly, exactly. And I, just for, to tell, Sherri is starting to really get comfortable in her role. She's actively working with a couple of developers on maybe one of the largest part, commercial parcels in town. So I don't wanna jinx anything, but she is, she's got very active. And I've also, as I think I may have mentioned to you folks, and I'll share with you, I should have done it already. I'll share with you a series of economic development initiatives that I asked Sherri to put together for potential funding through the American Rescue Plan, including a digital marketing campaign for, for our existing business, businesses here in town, and a couple of other things that I think you'll find interesting. So I'll, I'll be happy to share that document with you guys. Okay, thank you. New business. This, this is a new business. This is sorted just some interesting data that I.
It's almost, it's almost correspondence.
It's correspondence, except I did see the census data came through. Data Haven is a wonderful organization, based out of the Haven, obviously, but they do, they do a lot of good work in a lot of different areas. But they had the, the information posted, so I pulled an excerpt. But what's interesting to see is the, the change between 2010 and 2020. I know this is kind of small to read on this screen, and, and I'm sorry, but overall, the population in Guilford dropped by 302 people between 2010 and 2020. Certainly not the, the numbers you'd expect, expect with mass exodus out of Connecticut that we keep hearing about. Clearly, we, you know, yes, we've, and, you know, like 1%, a little less than 1, right around 1%. But what's interesting is to see the demographic shift. Non-Hispanic white community dropped by 1,555 individuals over that 10-year period. So it went from a percentage of 92.25% non-Hispanic white to 86.46%. So, and, and then you can see the balance of it as, as, as it, as it plays out. Interestingly enough, and I read something in The Times yesterday about, and this is a national trend, non-Hispanic, two or more races is a, is a trend that has, has evolved nationally, where people are now identifying themselves potentially differently than they, than they have in the past. But you see, that number goes from one, you know, just over 1% to 3.6%. And not a surprise, the largest non-white or, or, or non-white ethnic group is Hispanics, which has always, has been the case in Guilford for a long time. But that jumped from 3.48%, 3.5% to a little over 5.14%. So just, I, I thought you guys might enjoy to see what's happened in our community. So. If anybody has any questions, I'm not sure I'm the guy that can answer them, but.
Just going up on the website?
Yeah, probably will pop that up on the website at some point. Tracy and I haven't talked about it, but, and I just wanted to, I may, I may send it to Mary Jane to validate, because I had to put a couple of formulas in there to get some percentages, but. Mary Jane will validate my, my, my Excel expert. Oh, so so on it? Studied so so on Excel. All right. All right, since we're gonna have two items under executive session, we'll handle unless anybody else says new business. I'm sorry.
Nope.
Public forum, anyone from the public wishing to address this in public forum?
Can I make one quick comment?
Sure.
Because I reviewed the minutes from 2,000 of, of the original bond being put through. They were talking about the bond, they were talking about Mulberry Point Water Project, they were talking about saved streets.
You're kidding me.
No.
I love it.
Minutes.
What you didn't have, what you don't have now, and you did have then, was Bobby Baird. He checked it to everything.
All right, anybody else in public forum? Hearing none.
Yeah, that's fine.
Is there a motion to go into executive session? And we have 18 first, so we're gonna have to, you guys step out for a quick minute.
Okay, Chris.
Consider and take possible action on a collective bargaining agreement between the town and Guilford and the United Public Service Employees Union Local 424, Unit 92, Communications and Police Dispatches. And executive session will be required. I'll be inviting Mitch Goldblatt and Chris Hotch down to the meeting room. Are you gonna try to do it from there?
No, we're gonna come down to the meeting room. You can also invite the chiefs and deputy chiefs in as well. I know that the.
Right, they're on the line, they're on the line, so Chief Hyatt and Deputy Chief.
And Pete Barrett.
And Peter. And Pete Barrett as well, yeah.
Hey, I'll make the motion to go to executive session.
Second. Let me try your minds. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Sandy?
Hi.
Wonderful.
Tracy's gonna shut off the recording?
Yes, Tracy's. Yeah, it's off already.
Wait, what's this?
Matt? Can I come back for the land negotiations?
Yes.
Okay, so should I just?
Just dial back.
Hey, Chris.
Okay. Thank you.
Good to see a couple of guys in suits. I love it.
Close.
I'm leaving.
Hey, Mary Jane.
I love Chris.
Hey, Matt, hi, Susan.
We're still, the thing is still recording.
So.
No, it's not. What's the REC in the top corner?
It says that it's still recording right now.
Ask Tracy to stop recording it?
Yep. And.
Yeah, there was, oh, there was some famous footage. I don't know, it just said recording in progress. I were.
Okay. Where are you at? All right, is there a motion to come out of executive session?
I'm like, off second.
Sue is first and Lou is second. In executive session, we had, we had several discussions. There were no motions made, no actions taken. As to item 18, is there a motion to act to accept the collective bargaining agreement between the town of Guilford and the United Public Services Employees Union Local 424 dash Unit 92, Communications and Police Dispatches?
I would like to make a motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, let me try your minds. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Lou, thanks for your work on that with the negotiating team. Item 19, consider and take possible action on land negotiations. We had discussions relative to two pieces of property. Is there a motion to approve obtaining an appraisal on those two properties that we discussed in executive session?
Sandy?
So moved.
So move. Second, let me try your minds. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, Sandy. Motion carries unanimously. There being no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
The move.
The move. Undebatable. Thank you all.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, we're gonna, our next meeting is.
Still recording. Yep.
I'm not saying anything bad.
Scheduling.